Good morning. This is a city council work session for Monday, October 18th, 2021. It is 10 o'clock. Our first item is introduction of new city employees. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'd like to first have Bill introduce our first new employee.
Yes. So, relatively new employee. We have Adri, who's going to tell you a little bit about herself. We're so excited that you've been out at the golf course. Adri's been there for a while and serving in a variety of capacities and was now chosen to enter the full-time ranks of the city and hopefully stay for quite a long time. So, maybe just tell them how she's going to come on about herself.
Well, hi, guys. Thank you, guys, for taking me on. Um, I've been a native of Colorado. I'm from Gunnison, Colorado, originally. Haven't gone too far. I have three boys, a 14-year-old and two five-year-olds. My past line of work was I was a preschool assistant for about five years for Gunnison County. Then I kind of switched up a little bit and I started going more into the surgical field. And I was a surgical assistant in Gunnison and then I moved here to Montrose. Did that for about five, six years. And then I kind of got into serving, you know, once COVID happened. So, I haven't been in this industry very long, but I really enjoy, you know, when I hang out with all the people and everybody I get to see at the golf course. So, it's pretty much me. I'm not shy and I'm very social.
Well, thank you very much and welcome.
And we love Adri. She's doing a great job. Steven?
Another employee that's not shy and is very social is Chris Dowsey. He's originally from Long Island. Please let me introduce him. Last decade or so, he has been an inmate. The next thing you can hold against him is he was working for the Department of Revenue and Im inmates. So, he came from the tax department, but we're already putting over good use of some of the city side stuff that he's been working on this past couple of weeks. Very shortly, in light of some of the changes with the bag fees and stuff like that, he's coming out of the state. So, Chris, you can take him over here, too, and introduce yourself.
Good morning, all. I'm Chris Dowsey. I'm the new Assistant City Attorney, so I will likely be around here quite a bit. As Steven said, I am from Long Island. I'm coming here by way of Phoenix. I did get my JD at ASU and I've been an attorney for about a little over three years now. I'm very excited to be in Montrose and Colorado and just experience all that it has here. So, thank you.
You really like weather changes, don't you?
I'm sorry?
You really like weather changes?
Yes, yes. I just miss the snow so much. No, I just wanted that small city feel. I've been in big cities my entire life and I think this is going to be a perfect fit for me.
I do have one question for you.
Absolutely.
Yankee or Met?
Oh, Mets, all the way. Hey, that's fair. You know, I held no grudges. I don't know if you're a Yankees fan yourself. Well, we can both hate Boston. Exactly, exactly.
Well, welcome and thank you for showing up here and helping us out.
Thank you. Appreciate you having me.
All right, I have a couple of employees to introduce today. The first one is our newest Streets Division worker, Mitchell Webster. And he can come up and introduce himself. Actually, I haven't even met Mitchell yet, so I'll have to meet him today as well. But he's very much needed in the Streets Division. We're excited to add people. We have a couple more open positions, so looking to him and more coming, so.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. I'm Mitchell Webster. Nice to see you today. I was born and raised, I'm a native of the state, born and raised and grew up in Steamboat Springs, Colorado. I lived there till 2011. Ended up, was in the coal industry for 20 years, right out of high school, underground miner. Retired from that, went over to the Front Range and got into the transportation industry. And when COVID hit, kind of lost some hours and stuff, so I needed to relocate and wanted to get out of the city. I was born, you know, lived there my whole life in a smaller town and wasn't used to the city life that much, so ended up moving over here. My girlfriend, my girlfriend lives here, so moved over here with her and I really like Montrose. It's nice. It's not too small like Steamboats. It's only about eight or nine thousand, but it's, you know, it's perfect, perfect size for me, you know, not too big, not too small and got hired on what you got with streets, so yeah, I'm happy to be here. It's a nice town, a nice town. Love it here. Love the mountains, love to hunt and fish and...
Well, thank you very much and we appreciate you. Give us a hand.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
All right, and the second one is Michael Liedem. He's going to be our facilities foreman, so kind of taking some lead on some internal projects that we self-perform as much as we can and so he'll be kind of, he'll be in the foreman position. I'll let him introduce himself.
Yes, my name is Michael. I consider it an absolute privilege and a blessing to be here, meeting you all. This is definitely the best job I've ever been hired on. I grew up, I was raised and born in Denver, Colorado, spent my entire life there until about 2015, when we moved out here. My wife and my oldest daughter, we came out here. She had some family out here. I absolutely fell in love with the San Juans, our trips to Yarra. We wanted to buy a house, couldn't do that in Denver, came out to Montrose, was able to do that within a month. So, God really worked things out. It's been, it's been awesome here. I love the city. I actually spent my younger years in Parker, Colorado, which at that time was one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation. And as a young man, I got to see a community grow and turn into a big community and, you know, I see that happening here. And again, I consider that a very great blessing and a privilege to be a part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Got some other? So, you're going to put them back to work? The next item on our agenda today is a discussion on Elevate MOU and city build-out presentation. Kent?
Good morning. Kent Blackwell, Chief Technology Officer for DMEA and Elevate. Appreciate you having us out this morning to kind of share status on the Elevate build-out project here. Just kind of rewind history a little bit. 2015, DMEA had built out our fiber optic network to connect all of our substations through the electric grid, providing communications for electric services and our network as a whole. In 2015, we had a large number of members kind of crash one of our board meetings and kind of insist, if you will, that DMEA use those fiber optic facilities for a greater use. You know, the public cry at that time was that the service wasn't good enough in many parts of our service territory, that, you know, consumers were just displeased with the lack of broadband, the lack of service, the high pricing of services. And for that reason, our members kind of pushed us to kind of leverage those assets for a greater use. So, fast forward to 2000, there it goes. 2016, the board, you know, at that time, did follow that wish, follow that request of our membership and pushed us forward to offering a true internet service solution to try and bridge all the gaps and displeasures that our membership had kind of cried about. In 2016, we started that effort, started building out our network and through that, you know, in 2017, we, we and the city, some of the city staff at that time, specifically Virgil Turner, was instrumental in kind of pulling the two entities together to kind of create a larger mission. We signed a memorandum of understanding at that time, a four-year MOU to kind of, you know, meet the combined missions of both organizations to create digital equity for the town of Montrose in western Colorado. So, we, you know, it was a collaborative vision to get fiber to the premise to all the members. We, as part of the DMEA effort and ambition, was to build fiber throughout all of our service territory or build internet, I should say, maybe not fiber at that time, but the collective interest of both organizations aligned very well at that time to, you know, to empower and move forward is kind of a group effort to get fiber built throughout the city. DMEA committed to building out the network in four years and the city committed not to become an ISP of their own making, you know, to create competition as we built that out. The, since then, Elevate's built out over 1,100 miles of fiber optics in just five years. We just in the last month eclipsed 10,000 subscribers, so it's been a pretty aggressive five years in achieving, you know, this goal. To date, we are 31, or 34% of the Montrose addresses are taking service from us and we're 98% built within the city limits. There's exactly 51 properties that we don't have fiber to of those 51 properties. Mostly are apartments, mobile home parks that have a single property owner to which we need to collect private easements to make services to those properties viable. You know, in total, those 51 properties represent 173 actual premises that haven't taken, that don't have access to our services. So, it's a very small number and in our, in our observation, we've completed or met the mission originally at hand. So, in achieving 10,000 subscribers, you know, one of the big missions of DMEA and Elevate has always been giving back to the community. The community is really what supported us, gave us the grassroots inspiration and ability to get to 10,000 customers in five years. So, you know, we wanted to give back, specifically, we identified 10 members of our communities that were really instrumental in driving that grassroots effort, some of them real estate agents, some of them just private members of the public that just went door-to-door and truly kind of drove interest throughout the community. For that, you know, we gave away 10 $1,000 checks to those that we felt were most instrumental in helping us with that grassroots effort. The probably most notable, our very first customer back in September of 2016 was the Montrose Daily Press. The part of our success, of course, is geared around customer satisfaction. To that end, we monitor and measure our performance quarterly, monthly, annually. We pay very close attention to how the, our customers, our members, member owners perceive us and how we're doing with our, our performance. And net promoter score is kind of the universal industry way to kind of measure your success. Any survey, anybody that gives a nine or a 10 on a, on a survey for satisfaction, we rate those as promoters of our service. Anybody that gives a six, seven, or eight, or, I'm sorry, a seven or eight or agnostic kind of don't add to or take away from your score, but anything six or below actually is a negative number. It takes away from your score. So, to that end, the national average for internet service providers is right at a zero. You can see three of our most notable competitors listed here and their net promoter scores. But Elevate has achieved an 84.5, which is absolutely astronomical in comparison to the industry performance. Most recently, well, grant funding, you know, for Elevate to be viable for the long term, well into the future, it's highly critical for us to be very fiscally aware of our capital expenditures early on in this project. To that end, grant funding, subsidized funding is critical for keeping our financial performance under control. We most recently, well, actually not most recently, but we recently received a $10.5 million grant award to build out a good portion of Montrose County as well as Delta County, an area that'll serve 2,400 additional homes. That funding came from the Rural Utility Service Division of USDA and, but most recently, just last week, we were awarded another $1.9 million from the state of Colorado. And collectively in total, to date, we're over $27 million worth of total grant funding. This funding is absolutely necessary and will help us to kind of keep controls on our financial responsibilities. So far, you know, DMEA and Elevate were 62.5%, or 62.5% of all of our member owners now have access to the Elevate network. Most meaningful of that 62.5%, it's a total of 22,000 premises that we now have fiber optics to. And the city of Montrose alone contributes almost 50% of that. 10,900 addresses are within city of Montrose, city limits. So, it is a major milestone that, you know, we've now kind of completed our build here in the city in contributing towards that overall member with access to Elevate services. Obviously, we spoke, one of the key drivers of the original MOU between the city and DMEA and Elevate was digital equity. What does digital equity mean and, you know, what's most meaningful, you know, it's been heavily highlighted through COVID and events of the last two years, but just providing all of our residents, our member owners, and just the same privileges and accesses to digital services that anybody in the Front Range or honestly anywhere throughout the nation, whether that's education, healthcare, remote workforce capabilities, or simply just driving your home values by having access to these services. So, digital equity was kind of a combined effort back in 2017 when the MOU was signed and it was ahead of its time for all things that we've realized over the last two years. So, I'll kind of turn the mic over to Becky Mashburn, our Member Relations Manager, to kind of talk through kind of, you know, what we can do with this and what it means.
Thank you, Kent. Hello, everyone. So, Kent just discussed kind of the history of Elevate and the fact that Montrose is a gig city, but now what? What do we do with that? It's a pretty elite rank that all of our communities within DMEA's footprint have reached and we really think it's worth celebrating. So, we got together with Ann over the past few weeks and talked about what another partnership would look like to celebrate Montrose as well as our other communities as actual gig cities. So, what you see in front of you is the concept we've come up with, where each city can identify its own iconic marker. So, you'll see for Montrose, we currently have a mountain placeholder, but we were thinking you could use your Snepel's skyline and Montrose is a gig city. And Olathe could use its cornfield. Crawford could use its needle. Peonya could use Mount Lamborn. So, everywhere on the Western Slope is a gig city and can celebrate that status because we know it's really important, right? It's not only important for the people living here today, but all future generations. We're not going to move forward without that essential utility. So, how could we deploy this concept throughout the community? This is an example of how it might live as a badge on your website, where people who are looking to relocate or current citizens are looking for your information and they get reminded that they in fact live somewhere pretty darn special. They have something that Denver doesn't have. They have something that Las Vegas doesn't have, right? This is, this is a really elite thing. And here's how we could utilize that for businesses in the local community. They could have window clings saying that they're part of this network. They also are a gig business and they're part of this community. So, it's just a small partnership that we could grow together and we're going to hopefully expand this partnership across the Western Slope so that whether they're coming to Montrose, whether they're coming to Olathe, or whether they're walking into a cafe in Crawford, they recognize how special this area is. So, we just wanted to present this concept to you, open it up for questions, talk about how we might be able to partner together, grow it, or keep it simple.
So, again, thank you for having us this morning. Happy to take any questions or comments at this point.
Barbara, do you have a question?
Just a comment. What a great partnership, what a great opportunity for our community. It's definitely something I brag about when I meet people and I'm telling them or selling them on Montrose, you know, our quality of life, our airport, our hospital, and our gig internet. It's huge to people looking at doing business or traveling. So, thank you for what you've done for our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I think it's fantastic because one of the things that we use as a draw to bring other industries is the ability to, the remote connection and having a one-gig service, being able to transmit medical documents, being able to transmit architectural drawings with accuracy and speed is a very big draw for us to be able to attract other businesses here to Montrose. So, I think it's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
Just say I concur. Thank you very much for all the hard work you guys have done. I remember when it first got started. It's exciting.
Thank you. I'm one of the older people. I may have a little trouble keeping up with the speed, but I make an effort.
And thanks for a great member appreciation event last week. It was a little chilly, but it wasn't too bad and I look forward to seeing some of these gig city stickers in action.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions, staff?
I think we should ask the new director just to introduce herself and tell us a little bit of why she's really excited to be in Montrose. We, Ann and I just met with her recently and I'm really excited for our future partnerships. I think we have a really good working relationship already established and it's only going to get better.
Great.
Thank you so much, Bill. So, my name is Alyssa Clemson-Roberts and I am the new CEO of DMEA and Elevate. I spent a long time in the utility and telecom industry. I started at RUS actually doing loans for rural America to get broadband access and that's kind of how I got to the rural electric space. So, I went, I spent a long time in DC. In fact, I was DMEA's DC representative for a number of years, working on funding opportunities. And then I went to Arkansas to actually go build a network. And so, I've worked my way across the country and came to you from Platinum River Power Authority. It's a generation and transmission organization in Fort Collins. And when this opportunity opened, I got a call from someone I know in Colorado and they said, "You really need to go look at this." And I really liked where I was at and I wasn't sure and as I started looking and looking and looking, there was everything about this area that we really liked. So, I applied and we came out to the Western Slope and fell in love. And I was fortunate enough that the DMEA board offered me the job and here we are. So, I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to continue to work to provide excellent electric service and I look forward to us finishing our bill to all of our members in Montrose and Delta County. So, thank you so much for having me and so happy that we've got such a great city to partner with on this. And it is, it is a big deal to be a gig city and you should be very proud of yourselves.
Well, thank you and thank you for taking the time to come see us today and supporting our Western Slope. I think we're in a pretty nice place. Barbara, do you have anything?
Just throw in a quick pitch that Miss Alyssa Clemson-Roberts will be the presenter at Forum this Wednesday. So, if you want to know more about DMEA and Elevate and plans going forward for our community and her and her vision, come to Forum Wednesday morning, 8 to 9, over at CMEU campus.
What are you doing? You trying to get lower rates at your house or something?
I'm just trying to fill seats at Forum.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you, guys, very much. We'll try to keep, keep the lights on and computers running.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda today is the Police Department Co-Responder Program update. Mr. Hall?
Morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This must be a morning to showcase our partnerships, so I'm very proud to present to you today the partnership that we have with the Center for Mental Health. And sitting here next to me is Laura Byard. She is the Director for Clinical Services at the Center for Mental Health. It dawned on me here a few weeks ago that I don't think we've ever come to City Council to present our co-responder program and I thought, what a great opportunity, as there's been a few changes in staff members for our co-responder program here at Montrose Police Department and with the center. And so, I thought this would be a great time to be able to present to you what the co-responder program is, what it does, and then a few of the staff members that are working behind the scenes to, to help provide services to individuals in crisis when we encounter them. So, without further ado, I will just explain the program briefly. It started actually with our former Police Chief Tom Chin back in, I think, 2018. And this is, it's really a best practice, or it should be a best practice in law enforcement around the nation. And I'm really proud to say that for an agency our size, we have a fantastic co-responder program that not only reaches within the city limits of Montrose, but recently we have also partnered with the Montrose County Sheriff's Office to provide that service, or the center has provided that service to that agency as well. And essentially what it is, is that we have licensed clinicianists who ride with our police officers or embedded with our police department and the sheriff's department. And when we have an individual that is in, experiencing a mental health crisis, that clinicianist responds with the police officer to provide them services, talk them down, really provide that extra level of support so that it helps us get through that particular crisis. Our police officers are also trained to handle those situations, but it just provides that extra level of support. And then furthermore, these clinicianists can follow up in coordination with the center to provide these individuals future services in the hopes that maybe they don't have to call law enforcement to, to report a crisis. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Laura and she'll introduce some of, some of the clinicianists here today with us and talk a little more about the program.
Thank you for having us. I want to thank Chief Hall and Commander Cox and their incredible leadership of this program. It's really nice for us to be able to respond in support of law enforcement and really be able to provide services for our community members when they need it most. Chief Hall is correct, this program started in 2018 and really, I would say, spring of 2020, we really looked at revamping and evaluating the program. We updated the policies and procedures and then Commander Cox and Lieutenant Cox and then Chief Fettler and Under Sheriff Archibek from Delta and I all went out to Olathe, Kansas for the International Co-Responder Conference. And that was an incredible experience to really see that, one, we're doing a really great job in our rural community of responding to our individuals and then it allowed us to bring back some ideas for how we want to continue to go, grow from here. So, today we have with us Whitney Silva, who is our manager of our community services program, so oversees... program, so oversees this program and provides that training to evaluate and support our community members when they need it. And Brittany Baer, who just started with us as a co-responder. In addition to Brittany, we have two other co-responders, Justin Morgan and Drew Sanders. So we just added a third position this year. Our funding comes through the Office of Behavioral Health for this program through the center. So really excited to partner with law enforcement in these, these situations where our community members are needing mental health support and law enforcement has been called. Like Chief Hall said, we do, we are able to follow up after a call or a referral from law enforcement and support individuals and sometimes maybe meet some needs that were creating the crisis to begin with.
And maybe just to give you just a little bit more background, you know, the, the center provides all of the funding for this program. And so in, to help at least partner, you know, from a financial side or like maybe an in-kind side, we were actually, the city of Montrose, applied for a grant through the state for a vehicle. So I, I personally believe it, unfortunately doesn't happen all the time. We do have to transport individuals who are in crisis to the hospital initially for services and then our co-responder meets them there. Personally, I would like to see a day that would come when, as long as there's not an issue of violence, that we would ever have someone that would be in crisis in the back of a patrol vehicle. But we're not there yet. But as part of this program, the city was able to apply for a grant and we have a Ford Explorer that is a civilian vehicle that is provided to the co-responder to share both in the city of Montrose and in the county of Montrose so that we can do those transports in a less law enforcement type environment, just to help with that, what that crisis situation looks like and help to resolve it, so.
Is that vehicle identified with anything that would let, I mean, either police, so it looks like a police vehicle, which I don't think we'd want it to, or even that it looks like a mental health vehicle, which I don't think I'd want it to if it was transporting me in a crisis situation?
It's a gray Ford Explorer, completely unmarked. It doesn't have emergency lights in it. It does have a police radio, just in case there's some type of event or an issue during transport that the co-responder can call for assistance, but it's not marked either way.
That sounds good.
Yeah. It's a good question.
Just going to say this is such a critical service that we're providing to our constituency and our, and our citizens. And we've, over the years, have talked a lot and the amount of people that, they don't need to be arrested. They need help. They need someone to listen to them. They need some mental health professional care. And I think this is one of the most fantastic programs and I'm so excited and proud of Montrose for really kind of taking a lead on that. So thank you very much.
You bet.
I will just echo what the mayor proctem just said. Thank you very much for, for providing this service to our citizens.
Thank you.
I actually have a quick question. You, you said that we just brought on a third responder. I'm just curious, is that derivative of need or is that derivative of, you know, how, how do you determine whether or not you need a third responder? And, you know, as we grow and as we need more, how's that change?
That's a great question. Over last year, we did increase services as we had a co-responder and we kind of redid the program. We provided services to just over 200 unique individuals in Montrose last year. And we were able to connect many of them to services and so that was really great. In this case, there, the state of Colorado has co-responder programs throughout the state that are funded through the Office of Behavioral Health. Our Community Mental Health Center was funded as kind of a more recent group of that funding and kind of to right-size some of the funding from the front range, they increased our funding this year. So we were able to add a third person. So I was really grateful for that support. With only one person last year, we were only able to provide support kind of 11 to 8, Monday through Friday. With this, we'll be able to extend those hours and provide support onsite more often than we were able to do last year. It still won't be 24-hour coverage because we're doing, have three people across two counties, but we will continue to provide support even if we're not on shift when those individuals return to shift. And then we always support law enforcement through the mobile crisis and the crisis walk-in center when our co-responders are not on shift. So most importantly, we just want people to call for help and know that when they do call, they've got great trained officers who get crisis intervention training and then Community Mental Health Center co-responders and support as well.
Thank you. And I think having just recently been to the Colorado Municipal League meeting, this kind of service is mostly provided in larger communities. So I think we're very fortunate to have that available to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time today.
Our next item on the agenda today is the municipal code update and repeal of 6126 regarding loitering. Assistant City Attorney Matt McLeary.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council and members of the public via Zoom. I'm hearing a proposal to repeal one discreet provision in the Montrose Criminal Ordinances. That's in Title VI, Chapter 1, specifically at 6-1-26, loitering. What is sought is an outright repeal. There's no replacement ordinance language other than a numbering of the offense and the language of just, that's reserved. This proposal is a continuation of the legal department's review and cleanup of this chapter entitled, setting out the main criminal section of the code. Ordinance 2520, which was passed last year regarding amending a number of provisions of the code and adding the Model Penal Code definitions for mental states as well as 2546, repealing the false identification. This is another piece to that same project. A red line version appears on pages three to four of today's session packet and a clean version on pages following. An elemental instruction draft for both crimes is set out on the pages following. That's the section I'm going to be focusing on for most of the presentation. That's seven through eight. This particular ordinance sets out two different crimes. There's one applicable to juveniles. That's an A, big A, those under the age of 18. And one applicable to parents, guardians, or other adult persons having care and custody of the juveniles. That's in big B. The city in a prosecution of this offense would have the burden of approving all the essential elements of a charged offense beyond reasonable doubt to the fact finder, either juror or judge, and keeping in mind of reasonable defenses. That's the standard for any criminal ordinance prosecution and any state court prosecution for that matter. So the question that comes up in criminal practice is what is meant by an essential element? What does that mean? The state system makes this easy on us. There's a standing committee through the court system that publishes model jury instructions. They take statutory crimes and they chop them up into essential elements of the offenses. For ordinance prosecutions, I have to do this myself and for those, I, I follow the same general format that the model committee does. The problem with both of these is the elements, specifically element three of the criminal loitering for the juvenile, as well as element five, which is unfortunately misnumbered eight in the packet for the adult variant of that crime. I'll read three into the record. Unlawfully loitered on or about any street, avenue, highway, road, sidewalk, curb, gutter, parking lot, alley, vacant lot, park, playground, yard, building, place of amusement, or eating place, whether public or private. Loiter means remaining idle in a century-one location, to be dailatory, to tarry, to dawdle, and shall include but not be limited to standing around, hanging out, sitting, kneeling, sauntering, or prowling. That's a common definition of loiter. It's shared between the adult version of the offense and the juvenile version of the offense. And as I go into further in the presentation, it poses some issues with the prosecution of that offense beyond reasonable doubt. The penalty sections for both of these, so for adults, the, the fine is not to exceed $2,650 a year in jail or both. For juveniles, under a little reading of our code, it's a fine not to exceed $2,650 or by imprisonment and detention for not more than 10 days or both. Those are the fines and penalties applicable as a statutory maximums to both of these ordinance violations, for juveniles, for adults. Executive summary, why staff is recommending repeal. For one, the ordinance is not used in practice by the Montrose Police Department. Neither crime within 6-1-26, either A or B, has been cited to the Montrose Municipal Court in over a decade. Research requested and obtained from the Montrose Municipal Court's Clerk's Office revealed there were no charges in 2011 to current date. The last time this was charged was on November 21st of 2010. So we're coming up on the 11-year anniversary of that. We're a month shy or so. The clerk of court, at my request, ran cases all the way back to January 1st, 2008. That's, as I understand, the limit of their current database back there to, to run cases and case histories for charges. Subtracting duplications, there have only been 18 instances where this ordinance has been used. All those were denoted JM, denotated JM cases. That means they were juvenile cases. They were not adult cases. Adult cases would show up and the record is MC, Montrose Code Violations. So from that, the charge against the parent or guardian has not been used at any point from January 1st, 2008 to now, which would be approximately 13 years and nine months or so. The court had no record under its current electronic system of any initiation of prosecution for that particular offense. The legislative history is the second reason. I did go into the legislative history for this code violation. It reveals that the Montrose Code covers the kind of conduct that was impetus to pass juvenile loitering, at least the last iteration, the one that's currently before you. And with more, there are more provable statutes that address this conduct now. We have always had some level of this ordinance with us. I went back all the way to the, if council could see it, but it's the July 12th, 1927 adopted ordinances, book is about ready to fall apart. There is a section for a prohibiting minors under the age of 14. They shall not loiter, ramble, play, or frequent the sidewalks, streets, alleys, or public places of the city of Montrose. And there's a timeframe for that. Section two, I'd note with interest, it used to be the duty of the chief of police at the hour of nine o'clock PM each day between March 1st and August 31st of each year, and at the hour of eight o'clock PM between the first day of September and the last day of February of each year, to give or cause to be given three distinct taps on the fire bell. This was to announce the curfew. I am in support of continuing this practice. I don't know.
Can we resume that one? I think that, that's valuable right there.
Well, I've got to do it. It's going to be loud. Councilman Reed.
We would actually amend that and make a special costume or something along those lines.
We may have to budget a sledgehammer for him. I don't know. The current version of this came about in 1993. It was first initiated in January of, of that year. It was originally tabled after its first reading because there was a lot of public comment at that time to encompass additional public comment. And unlike most ordinances I've taken a look at for, for review here, there's a fair amount of written correspondence to the city within the legislative record for this. And the letter authors mentioned common themes. So the ones in support mentioned juveniles cruising the streets at night, some street racing, loud stereo music, drinking alcohol by the underage. These are topics that occurred with some refrain in the letters that were in the pro column. There were letters in the con column and there is also a letter from the ACU pointing out that the ordinance had some constitutional infirmities as drafted and that it was likely in violation of the Fourth Amendment, also that the overbroad language invited litigation. So an amended version that did strip out some portions of that language was introduced as ordinance 1523. It was presented and passed in September of 1994 after a first and a second reading. I would suggest to the council that one of the bases for passing this and looking back to legislative history, and the reason I did that was, we have mechanisms in the code to prosecute juveniles for conduct complained of in the legislative history. And we have that now and we, we use these statutes now. For example, speed contests and exhibition of speed. We have a city code provision within our traffic code that covers that. And the former of which is actually a 12-point violation. It will take a license from an adult, let alone a juvenile. We have a code violation against the blasting of loud stereo music. It's unlawful to operate a motor vehicle with a sound amplification equipment between certain periods of time or near a hospital under 6-1-23. There's general provisions for unreasonable noise or making unreasonable noise. There are prohibitions in the code for the underage possession of tobacco products, marijuana, related paraphernalia, and to make it unlawful for underage possession, purchase, consumption of alcohol. We have loss for trespass, destruction of property, and criminal mischief on the, the latter of which on the state level. And last, if a police officer encounters a juvenile late in the evening hours, early morning hours, he or she is able to, just have the discretion to, send the report as a referral to DHSS to determine whether or not family services are in fact needed or report needs to be entered or opened, an investigation made under Title 19 of our state code. The last basis for, that I would suggest as a basis for appeal here is the ordinance, as written, presents likely constitutional challenges in a potential contested prosecution. All the 18 cases so far, to my knowledge, did not go that route. They were resolved with guilty pleas. And as I thought about a prosecution under this, I thought of an example. So City Council has a regular session and there's an 11 o'clock rule, 11:00 PM rule. Often, the last thing on the agenda is staff and youth council reports. So in consideration of an example here, let's say we have two of the city council members, youth city council members stay on after the long meeting. And then after a germit, they walk to the tables of the straw hat. That area is typically closed, but the tables remain open to discuss the session, to discuss the session topics for that night and to talk on other private topics. A police officer comes by. They're idling in one location. Let's say they're underage, they're under 18. Let's say that they're not supposed to be there. They're hanging out and they're discussing here a mix of civil, of civic and social activities related to government as well as private topics to themselves. There's a question of whether or not that can be cited under a little, little version of the code. I don't think in practical reality it would be, but nonetheless, we have to go by what's written here. And then the penalties that are associated with it. 10 days of juvenile detention, a fine of $2,650 or combination of both. So in keeping that example in mind, in interest of disclosure, doing some legal research in this, this matter, the Colorado Supreme Court has considered a curfew type of case before. That was people in the matter of JM. Is that a pueblo? It considered the pueblo juvenile curfew statute and application of that for a person that was caught for an act of graffiti essentially, as well as being underage and under the curfew, prosecuted under the curfew. There was a, and that litigant lost, but he lost on some other grounds and more, it's a more narrow ruling than one may look to it. One may not look to it for a proposition that it's, it should stand that any constitutional challenge for these would be turned away by a juvenile. One argument that was not made by that litigant, it was noted by the court, was that the law is void, the law, it would be void for vagueness. And vague laws, quoting from another opinion, vague laws are unconstitutional because they offend due process. It sounds in procedural due, due process. A vague law offends due process because it fails to give fair notice of the conduct prohibited and does not supply adequate standards to prevent arbitrary discretionary enforcement. A penal statute must be sufficiently definite to give fair warning of prescribed conduct so that persons may guide their actions accordingly and must define offense with sufficient clarity to prevent arbitrary and discriminatory enforcement in the statute. So go back to our example. And this argument was not mazed or made or treated in the Colorado Supreme Court case that I mentioned earlier. Going back to our example earlier, we have to give fair warning of what's prohibited to, to the target of the law. That's a procedural due process requirement within our constitution. We also need to give realistic indefinite rules to those enforcing the law so we don't invite arbitrary enforcement of criminal provisions with criminal consequences. And that I would submit to you may be an issue presented forward in a prosecution under this. So given that, staff is recommending a repeal of 6-1-26. And I can take any questions.
Just curious if you know, is this, the repeal that you're proposing, is this really consistent with what other Colorado cities are doing now?
I've looked at some of the other Colorado statutes. I'm not aware of any other cities moving to repeal their loitering ordinances. I will say that I looked at Delta's curfew ordinance as well as Durango's, neither one of which reads like this. They're more narrow, and they're more tailored towards it's a curfew violation. Delta's actually seemingly has non-criminal penalties. It's a mandatory referral out after an attempt to contact parents. I'm not aware of any other municipalities that's actively seeking to repeal the loitering provision.
Thank you.
I have a question in regards to panhandling and transients. I mean, if we decide we want to remove transients or panhandlers from a property which is private or public, I mean, does this not cover that as well, or do we have another provision that we can utilize at that time?
We would actually cite trespassing in that regard if they, if they didn't leave. But this kind of goes hand in hand with what we're trying to focus on here today. The police department doesn't cite this, frankly, because we're afraid of the constitutionality of it. And so, you know, in this day and age in Colorado, if we have someone who is panhandling on a city sidewalk, and we receive a complaint, they're allowed to be on the city sidewalk, and unless they're creating some type of a safety hazard, then we're not going to take any type of enforcement action. So that's one of the main reasons why we haven't enforced this. Because as Matthew said, we have, we usually have something else if enforcement action needs to be taken, that we're able to pull from our ordinances or from state law.
It's kind of the equivalent of when my mom used to, she was frustrated with me, couldn't know what to say, and said, "Well, because, because I said so." It's really an intellectually deficient ordinance that is kind of the equivalent of wagging your finger. So that's why the police officers, if they see them kid up to no good, we charge what that action is, not this overbroad, "I don't know what else to charge you with, so I'm going to charge this," and then that gets the city in trouble.
Former?
I just had one. What kind of trouble did you get in as a kid?
You know, as a preacher's kid, I was good for nothing.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Any other questions? Let's go on to intergovernmental agreement between the city and county of Montrose pertaining to development of lands surrounding the city. Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
Alright, thank you, Mayor and City Council. So this one's an update of our current 2010 intergovernmental agreement between the city and county. Usually, we want to update this anytime we've done an update to our comprehensive plan. So as you know, that was formally adopted in June of this year. And so now we're bringing before you an update to our IGA between the city and county. And what this is, is it's an agreement between the city and county as it pertains to any kind of development proposals that come before either one of us. We want to make sure that the city and the surrounding area is developed accordingly based upon available services, whether it be city sewer and water services, or also in compliance with our transportation plan as the city grows. And so basically, anytime the county gets some kind of a development proposal that's within the area of the IGA, so you can see that in your exhibits, I think it's Exhibit A in your packet, they will actually refer them to the city first to see if this is an area that needs to be annexed into the city limits based upon whether it's contiguous to city limits or whether there's availability of city water and service, city water and sewer services. And so this is just an update to that plan. Like I said, it's been one that we've had for a long time. The last time it was updated was in 2010. So this basically just updates it to what we've been doing in current practices. I don't think there are any really major changes to it. We've updated it so that the maps reflect our current comprehensive plan maps, and just stating that we're going to make sure that it conforms to our current standard subdivision processes as well as that we're meeting on a quarterly basis instead of monthly basis. So we do talk on a very regular basis. And like I said, anytime a new development comes to them, we're included in their development review process as well. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward, and I'm open to any questions.
Alright, David? David?
One question I have is on item, let me look at the, item A, C, 1C, concerning the onsite waste treatment systems. Do we really have a lot of those currently being considered? I know there are a lot of properties that currently have onsite septic systems, et cetera. When we annex those, do we require them to conform with our other sanitation requirements?
Don't you answer that?
Sure.
Okay, I can answer them. So generally, our code requires extension and tying onto sanitary sewer. It's kind of one of the core elements of being within the city limits. There are exceptions though. So if somebody's way out in the sticks on the fringe, sewer's somewhat available, you know, within a, you know, 500 feet or 400 feet, like it's on the edge, and their leach field failed and they just need to replace it. Typically, we're not requiring them to annex, or maybe they're not even eligible for annexation sometimes, the way the conundrum works out. So in those cases, usually they can get a permit from, the county still governs and issues permits, the County Health Department, for sanitary. So if they need to do a replacement leach field and they have plenty of property to do it, typically, the city would allow that to occur and not require them to annex and extend city sewer or tie on to city sewer. And then there are some examples too, that, we just had one recently. It was a subdivision that was completely in a hole. It was eight acre lots, really rural in the country, on the fringe of the city's development, that you couldn't get sewer there really if you wanted to. And the cost of all that infrastructure for eight houses, when you have that much space for replacement leach fields, you would never have a public health concern. We would allow, in that case, we allowed septic. But those are kind of the unique exceptions. Typically, any new development requires provisions for sanitary sewer connection. That kind of helps keep the, expand the network out and avoid, because if you get, if everyone on the fringe developed as septic, our sewer system would be halted and you couldn't get through those properties. So the idea is the sewer kind of migrates its way out, and this helps kind of facilitate that over time. If that makes sense. Sorry, long answer to that question.
Thank you.
Better than I would have done.
Any other questions, Scott?
Do you have a question? So when you look at a large project like the event center, how does this work with that event center or something like that in the future? I mean, does this also require that kind of working back and forth in collaboration?
Are you talking the size of the building, or the location of it?
The location, the parking, the, you know, the accessibility. Just as things grow out, if something else goes into the county that's up against city property, I mean, what kind of collaboration does this kind of dictate for a larger project like that? That's not necessarily housing.
It's really any development. So usually, anything they have that's going to come, that's right on the, within that urban growth boundary, we look at together to determine whether it's something that needs to be annexed or not. And a lot of it is driven by utilities.
And some of those unique elements, you know, that are county projects, so sponsored by the county itself. So the event center is a good example, the airport terminal expansion is a good example. Those all do go through site development still. So within city limits, it's triggered, because a lot of times they're in the same boat. If they're tying on to city utilities, they're coming, they are in, annexed into the city, and then that triggers site development and some other regs that come into place like stormwater and stuff like that too, that we still collaborate on.
Scott, I have one other question. You were talking about if I'm on the fringe of the city and the septic tank fails. Do you guys have a footage of such, between you and the county and the state that would require them to tie on to our systems?
So the magic number that's in the agreement, I think it's in here, is 400 feet is mandatory. That's a little different though than development. So yeah, if someone has something that fails and they're more than 400 feet, it's kind of a no-brainer that they would be able to replace that leach field unless there wasn't space to do so. If they're within that 400 feet, it kind of becomes at our discretion. If it's relatively straightforward and they, it's easy to annex and the annexation is eligible, we would probably ask them to annex. But then, that is different from new developments. If you're going to go in with a new subdivision or subdivide your property, that's really where this agreement kind of keeps us protected. Because that would, that would drive, even if you're further than 400 feet, utility extensions. If you're going to have urban levels of density, you need, you know, urban sewer, that kind of thing.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda today is the proposed fee schedule revision. Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mayor Glassbell. Included in the, included in the meeting packet is proposed fee schedule revisions that if adopted, would take effect January 1st, 2022. We have all the staff members who recommended changes available here to answer questions you might have. But I can share my screen and we can review them item by item. Under administrative fees, the first item is the removal of a fire hydrant use fee that is obsolete. We added the amount we charge for records requests. These fees were set in 2014, and they're housed in our records management manual, but we put them in our fee schedule, just to be a little more clear. We've removed the security alarm vendor permit. That was, that was an action of council a few months ago by ordinance. Then, under cemetery fees, we are adding the amounts we charge for the columbarium niche plates and date scrolls. There's a range, depending on the number of letters and numbers included, but they generally fall within this range, these ranges. Then, under land use fees, the only change was the addition of the city operations and police services fees that are generally charged for annexations. We've been charging them, but we added them to the fee schedule. They increase annually according to the CPI. Right now, this is the 2021 fee, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, but it gets adjusted at the end of the first quarter of each year. And then, under... There are no changes to liquor fees. Under private parks and private use of public property, we're recommending the removal of these festival event permit fees. The festival event permit was created in 2010. We've never issued a festival event permit. And in order to not create confusion when charging fees for amphitheater use, we're suggesting that we take these out of the fee schedule. And a little bit further down are the suggested rates for the Montrose Artory Amphitheater. We're suggesting a three-tiered fee schedule. This use of the stage only would be the same rate as an event use permit. That would be $100 for a 24-hour booking window. Then, if the stage is used along with the wings and backstage area, it would be $500. The full facility, including the vendor area, would be $1,000 for that 24-hour booking window. And the deposit would be 50% of the total rental fees for that event. Any questions on that? Okay, under memorial benches, we have several different locations for benches. There's benches in the downtown area, in parks, and along the Riverfront Trail. We are just clarifying that our bench fee covers all of those areas. It includes the bench, the plaque, and the installation of the bench. And our overhead Main Street banner installation, this is kind of interesting. For one banner, the cost went down, and for two banners, it went up slightly. We're just trying to accurately reflect our costs and what we're being charged by the vendor who does the installation. Under park shelter reservations, we just wanted to clarify that that $25 park shelter fee is per day instead of like one person reserving a fee for the entire, reserving a shelter for the entire weekend and being charged $25. We also have a tree legacy program, and we added the plaque to put next to the tree that would be installed on city property. And that falls within a range depending on the cost of the production of the plaque. There is a typo there, I apologize, I will correct that. But it is $350 at the upper end of that. Then, police department administrative fees. They requested to update the fees for police reports and criminal history reports. They added 25 cents per page for a hard copy of a document. And then, a little bit farther down, their staff time for research and redaction and administrative fees for specialized document production and specialized skills required to fully comply with the request. Those fees were stated in this schedule where they weren't before. Chief Hall can answer any questions you have on those. There were no changes to the building code fees. And pavilion fee schedule, we just made a few minor changes. We removed three obsolete charges. We don't charge for television VCRs or cassette players or faxes. We don't offer those services anymore. Since COVID, our fees for linens have gone up kind of drastically, but this is actually our cost that we pass on to the customer. And then, I believe the last section is rather comprehensive, the fee schedule for water, sewer, and trash. And Shani is going to talk about those items.
I'm not sure how I drew that short straw. But we've had these discussions with you all during some of our budget meetings. And so this just solidifies some of those conversations for our enterprise funds, water, sewer, and trash and recycling. Our water fees have not been updated since January of 2011. So we thought this was a good time to just put all these fees out there. We don't like to increase fees, but with the inflationary increases that have happened since 2011 and the inflationary increases we're seeing with construction costs, we really feel it's best to start now. We might need to do this for the next couple of years, just to get back on track with our construction schedule. So make sure that I'm not misspeaking on that. Sewer fees were actually increased in January of 2018, and we're recommending that those also are increased for 2022. And these are all increases that we're proposing as of January 1, 2022, rather than the April 1st, that's the provision, which is in all of these ordinances that allows management to increase fees up to 3% without a council vote. So just as a clarification on that. And then, trash and recycling fees, we're recommending as well in January of 2022. During the 2021 budget session, we discussed increasing trash and recycling fees, 5% for the next five years, which would end in 2026. As we were analyzing the 2022 budget, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are, as far as the inflationary increases that we're seeing at the, as tipping fees, as well as the cost of new trash trucks, we are actually recommending a 10% increase to trash and recycling fees for 2022. So jumping back to the water fee increases, as you all know, you've heard a couple of times from Project Seven, they are increasing their fees 15% to us every year. I don't even know if I know when it ends, until they construct their redundancy treatment plant south of town. So our fees will increase every year. So we anticipate a fee increase to the usage of water every year, which to a resident is 44 cents per thousand gallons in 2022. And then a 5% increase to the fixed cost. So the monthly fee that has no water usage associated would be a 5%, which is what we anticipate the inflationary rate to be in the Western Region CPI. And then the sewer fees are just 5% across the board. There's a little bit of usage associated with sewer on our commercial accounts, but we're not tying that to treated water. So it's just 5%.
Any questions, anyone?
Actually, I have two questions. I'll start with you guys. I know during our budgetary meeting, there was concerns of whether or not we would have enough money to continue to grow the operations for sewer water utilities. Is that increase just to cover inflation enough to really make sure that we're going to be okay in the future? Or are we not going far enough to ensure that we actually have a budget buildup for future needs? Or are we not going far enough to ensure that we actually have a budget buildup for future needs?
So based on that discussion at the the all-day budget retreat is why we took another look at the trash and recycling piece specifically. And and real and taking another look at the cost of disposal and the rising cost of trucks. That's why we're moving that from five percent to ten percent as a recommendation. As we talked about that day with any of our rate increases, we want to try to have a good balance to make sure that we're planning for the future, but we're not over-increasing fees to where we're padding our budget or we're just putting money into the savings that we're not going to use. And so we think this recommendation is a good balance of that. So we're trying to be good stewards for our customers and make sure that we're being conservative. But we're also handling things like pass-throughs from Project Seven. We don't have a choice on that. We have to pass it through. Uh, we're doing those things responsibly so it doesn't put us upside down in our water fund, as an example. So so I think we're we're trying to be a good blend of planning ahead, but not being too aggressive on fee increases. And then every year, of course, we'll analyze where we're sitting from the business unit perspective. We'll meet with city council on that during our budget retreat, just like we did this year, and we'll talk about our business enterprises. How are they doing? If anything changes between now and next year when we have our meeting, we'll make sure everybody's on the same page with that. And if we need to adjust the recommendations at that time, we will. And then just for clarification, on what Shaney mentioned regarding the ordinance allows management to do an inflationary increase come April, that's based on the the first quarter's Western CPI. And and a few years ago, the council adopted an ordinance that allows us to do that inflationary increase, but it's only up to that smaller percentage. And that's why we're asking council through this and through the adoption of our annual budget to approve larger than just the CPI for those business enterprises that need to be caught up or plan for growth.
Do you want me to do my second question? My second question was for Amy. We had talked about the changes to some of the filing filing fees and increasing those. You know, that's been floated a little bit. Was there any reason we decided not to raise some of the filing fees?
Are you speaking in reference to like their application fees and stuff like that?
And some of the other work that was going into that, that it wasn't really covering all the upfront work that you guys were having to do and needing to raise those fees slightly to to adjust for what what you guys were putting into it.
True. Yeah, I think we decided we're keeping the ones that we have as they are. We feel that they're adequate for what we're doing. Um, there are some that we are potentially thinking about adding or changing in the future, especially as it pertains to right-of-way vacations. I think that was the big one that council had talked to in the past. But that was going to require some bigger code amendments that we're planning on working on next year with some help from outside consultant work.
Sure.
I have a question. If we didn't raise fees for water and sewer, those funds were on a trajectory to bankrupt. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Actually, I've got a few slides that I'm going to show at the Budget Open House. We can put a plug in for that tomorrow at five P M. That shows that projection for the trash and recycling fund. Not done a projection for water and sewer, but you can see from the just the current slide how it's decreasing.
Thank you.
You know, David Breeze, you might just give us a little update on what the anticipated cost of that new water treatment facility is.
Yeah, just the latest numbers for the Project Seven Water Treatment Facility is around sixty million dollars. Um, and that would be shared by all six entities in Project Seven. Um, but pretty much on a proportional to water use rate. Um, City of Montrose uses roughly fifty percent of that capacity. So the the real impact on the city is we would be obligated over the next twenty, thirty, forty years to pay for that treatment plan, about thirty million dollars. Um, and that is subject to some changes with all of the inflationary stuff that we're seeing now, some of the supply chain issues and stuff. That project hasn't been bid out. We don't have firm costs. All of those are estimates at this point in time. So those could vary and increase possibly in the next, you know, year, year and a half. Yeah, yeah, and there there is other funding opportunities that they are exploring with some grants and and some federal assistance and stuff on that, some low-interest loans and and grants and stuff. So all of those type of things all affect the whole project funding and and the cost that's passed on to the entities as consumers.
And does that include the costs to upgrading our facilities here in Montrose?
That no, that would be just for the Project Seven delivery facilities that would provide water to the different entities, the six different entities. All of the city-maintained water distribution facilities and stuff, all the maintenance projects that we do are separate from that sixty million dollars.
And I'm specifically speaking to the upgrades that that our facility will be required to make in order to meet the new regulations.
Oh, at the at the wastewater.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the wastewater treatment plant, yes.
Yeah, at the wastewater treatment facility, yeah, over the next ten years, there will be some some improvements needed out there in order to meet stricter regulations. Um, in fact, later this week, I've got meetings with some of our consultants that are looking at some of that stuff on some of the PFOS and and nutrients and the arsenic and all of those regulations that are under development right now through EPA and the state.
And the wastewater treatment plant falls under our sewer fund. So just we have sewer collection and the wastewater treatment plant, both under sewer rates. And then we have water and then trash and recycling.
I think also with with the new water plant that's going to be built, we have in addition to just the plant itself, you have some cost of water line to get the water to the plant and some cost to take that new water, bring it in to tie into our existing lines too.
Right. Yeah, and that's that's all included in that sixty million dollars. A lot of that cost is piping costs for getting that water water from the Ridgeway Reservoir to the treatment plant and then from the treatment plant out to the distribution system. Um, the current plan is to utilize as much of the existing infrastructure. Tri-County Water has some water lines and they're working on a plan to try to utilize those for the short term to be able to provide water into the system until those lines reach their capacity and then we have to do additional transmission mains, kind of spread that out over the next, you know, fifteen, twenty years maybe.
I think it's important also to note that we did our best to negotiate with Project Seven a different funding strategy for the City of Montrose's portion. Uh, we had approached them and asked that that we sign a letter of intent or an MOU, something to say at the time of construction, we would pony up our our percentage share, our pro-rata share, uh, rather than start billing our customers right now and increasing those rates. And it just wasn't the route that they they wanted to be equitable across the board with all of their partnering users, which is understandable. And so this year, we had a couple hundred thousand dollars, just shy of three hundred, if I'm remembering right, in this year's budget that was unbudgeted, that we had to pay. And then that's what led us to looking at what our annual contribution is going to be. So so we did try to negotiate something different. My preferred option would have been signing an MOU. That way, we could utilize our own reserves currently to do other projects and different things, but ultimately, that isn't what we could negotiate.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, guys. The last item on our list today is city council boundaries. Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mayor Glassbell. As council is aware, we have a charter requirement to adjust our city council district boundaries following each decennial census. And we have one year from the date of publication of the census results. Our census results were published in August of two thousand and twenty-one, which gives us until August twenty twenty-two to make sure that all four council districts have approximately equal population. So what we're asking for today is direction from council as to whether we want to proceed with adjusting the council district boundaries before candidates can circulate petitions for the two thousand and twenty-two election or if we want to wait until after the election is complete in April. Candidates can start circulating petitions as of January fourth, but we generally put candidate information on our website and have it available in the city clerk's office by mid-December. So we're just looking for some direction from you.
I think the process needs to involve a lot of stakeholder engagement, needs to be very transparent. It needs to look like a little miniature version of what the state recently did in in redistricting both the state's congressional seats and the state's legislative seats. Um, and I don't see as we have time to do that in the next two, three months before candidates need to determine where they live and if they're running. So I would I would suggest we engage in a in a comprehensive process that goes next spring through summer to establish that.
What have we historically done in the past? Have we done it? Have we redistricted prior to the April election or subsequent?
I believe we have. I don't think we've done the extensive process that that Ms. Bynum is is talking about, but I I think we have. It was two thousand and ten. I wasn't clerk at that point, but what I'm remembering is that after the census results, which were released earlier, there was an adjustment before the next election.
The one thing I would recommend is that while I while I see the value in stakeholder engagement, I also see value in making sure that we're adequately preparing our our population to know where they live relative to the districts prior to the election, because otherwise, we're going to have a lot more line juggling to make sure that we don't exclude someone from a district that they've been elected to represent.
Actually, we don't have to do any line juggling because it's illegal to draw the new districts based on where current elected officials sit. So those new districts are drawn without that regard to who's elected.
I think my concern would be if we go through and we wait till after the election, we're looking at four years. We're we're almost halfway to the new census before we even redraw the lines because everyone's up this year. Um, you know, so I I don't know how that I I I understand your points. On the other side, I'm going, well, I mean, do we make it right now so that the proper person is seated in the right place to represent their constituents versus they're in seat and then we change everything and it might actually move where people might be post-election?
Do we have any field at all for how much this may change? Have we had an opportunity to look at this at all?
I believe it's a minor shift. There were three scenarios that were developed by GIS mapping.
Yeah, the GIS had sent out to us like three different proposals, three different adjustments, and all of them were fairly binary. My concern is we don't accidentally put someone who would normally run for District Three right at the border of where an adjustment might take place and then force us into having to readjust that later, as Anthony's pointing at.
Some of the proposals by GIS did not meet the legal requirements of redistricting, so I have some concerns that the process be a little bit more thorough.
Stephen, do you have any direction or comments on that?
What has been done in the past, I'm like Lisa, I came after the two thousand and ten. Um, my understanding, the previous two redistrictings were quite informal. It was something like what was provided by GIS before. There was a work session, talked about it, and two weeks later, they voted on it. Um, so this is a different approach that CML has been encouraging. Uh, we've attended some webinars on that, and we've seen a new, more comprehensive model demonstrated by the state. And I think that is the the route that most of the state is heading towards now.
Do you think we have time to do the more comprehensive, thorough model, vetting model before the election in April?
I don't. I would say no. Could we set up kind of a racetrack and get it done? But then I I think that that would be not, it'd be providing lip service to what council has previously talked about as far as community engagement. So yes, could we throw things out there and make it happen? Probably. Would it be done well? No. Uh, so based on what council has talked about in the past, I think we'd have to do it after the election.
Thank you.
Well, I had my mind set the other direction, but now you about talked me into waiting. Um, my thought was to try to have gotten it taken care of before the election, but if they are that minor, I'm not sure that it's going to be that great of an effect and and we wouldn't actually be voting someone out of office anyway. And we only have four positions as kind of effect because one of those positions is an at-large position, so I don't have a problem with with this waiting at this point.
I think because we've watched the state redistrict recently, I think perhaps we're all a little more aware and our community and our citizens are more aware that there's more involved than just counting people and shuffling the lines a little. You know, that you if it was that easy, we could just talk about it and agree to do it and pass it in the next meeting. But I think it's a little more complicated than it used to be or that people or that the process needs to be really transparent. And perhaps in the past, that wasn't important as important to our community. They said, oh, yeah, I moved the lines a block or two. That's fine. Um, I just have concerns that we be really transparent about this process and that we engage the public at the level they want to be engaged in and we don't just talk about it one month and pass it the next before the next election. I don't think there's time.
I would agree with that, but I also see value in the fact that and the very comprehensive redistricting model that is being touted is because most of those remodel or redistricting are partisan seats and partisan positions and partisan redistricting. Where I'd like to point out that the Montrose City Council is a non-partisan position. So it isn't as critical that we have a balance of the different political parties in our redistricting. And I think that changes the formula somewhat. And I think that reduces the need for, you know, active, doesn't eliminate by any means, of course, but that reduces the need for that community engagement somewhat.
Sure, absolutely. That's an excellent point. I just think the process needs to go further than just GIS and we need to engage our legal department so that we make sure that the districts we draw are not illegal.
And I think another part of that too, in speaking to what Dave's mentioned, is, you know, we as city council members, we try hard to to represent all of Montrose, and I I don't think anyone sits down and says, well, it's better for my district, so you guys can go somewhere. I think we all try to be a team, and I think that that approach also impacts what this looks like. Um, and I think that that we should take that into consideration. I mean, if the changes are minor, it's something we can work through. I think we had some more information that would be helpful if we kind of knew what that looked like a little bit to determine whether or not we should move forward with a quick decision or if we need to wait and engage the public.
Do we have the ability to get some additional information to bring forward to us, maybe a little history of what we've done and what the city has done in the past and how that was handled and?
I mean, what what I described is what was what I'm told was done the last two times. They it was around the table. It was a fifteen-minute conversation and voted on. Um, so and we're happy to provide information. I'm just not sure what information people are wanting.
I think if we had just a rough idea from a GIS standpoint of of what we're looking at, what those changes might be.
GIS sent us that information a few months ago. They said, here are some based on census numbers that weren't final, but now that numbers are final, do you do you want to see those maps again and then talk it through? And I can point out any of the concerns I have, or I think GIS didn't realize some of the laws that are.
If you feel we have the time where we can maybe cover that at another meeting, I think that'd be a great, great thing to take a look at.
Because it's if it really is just something shifts a little based on population, you know, we, for example, we can't take into effect or we can't take into consideration where we see growth about to happen, and there was some where we see growth about to happen, and there was some recommendation for that. It has to be based on solid data. And, I mean, we can sit down and look at it and say, yeah, this isn't actually a big deal, it adjusts a tiny bit and we can make this decision right now. I'm, I'm willing to entertain that.
That's, that would be my preference, I think. I'd like to look at that, get a little more information before giving direction.
Maybe we need a little bit of a, like a work, a study session specifically about this.
My concern on that, I want to make sure we expedite this process because we don't want to ask for more information and have that push us to the point where we can't get it done in time.
And I think Eric already has three or four different maps that the sole thing that was looked at was equal, equalization of population. So, I don't, I, I think next work session or something that could happen, right Lisa?
But what you have seen suggests to you fairly minor changes regardless of which option we look at?
If all you do is look at population and not stakeholder groups and things like that, so more traditional to what was done previous years, yes.
Well, I, I, I tend to agree with what Dave has said in that this is a non-partisan body, so we're not really looking at it from the standpoint of who's a Dem, who's a Republican, who's an independent. So, with that in mind, it suggests to me that, are we really going to look at stakeholder groups?
No, but maybe I should be more specific. The part that is not legal about our current situation is that you can't have a district that is not contiguous to itself but is contiguous to another district. So, for currently right now, District Three has a whole chunk that isn't touching the rest of District Three, but it is touching District One without regard to party or communities of interest. That just isn't allowed. So, we just need to make sure that we do look at the laws and not just a population count. And so, I, I wasn't trying to be vague, maybe I should have been more specific.
I guess the question I would have on that is, does the roadway itself on Spring Creek show, is that considered a connecting piece? Or, because if so, if not, then you're absolutely correct, but then again, that also lends itself to District Two, there's a number of little satellite. No, nothing in District Four is, is disconnected. Well, yeah, you're right, there is. Yeah. So, I think clarification on that issue would be important as far as whether the roadway itself acts as a connector piece.
Yeah, when, when Councilmember Bynum brought this up a while back, we checked into that. So, what makes District Three's issue different than the other ones you just mentioned is that the piece on the left-hand side of that map in District Three is actually contiguous to the pink portion up above, where in District Two, where you have isolated pockets, they're not touching another district. So, that's okay. You have to do that because there are just pockets, there's enclaves, right? But it's very similar to doing flagpole annexation. We try to avoid that as well using roadways. So, we would prefer not to do that. So, it needs to be, since, so just looking at it, and I don't get, usually get too involved in this stuff, but I know Ann's been working on it and, and talking with Eric as well and, and then Lisa, as the clerk, has taken the lead recently on it, I believe. It's a matter of just, adjusting that blue to the pink, reducing pink on the right top portion and turning that green would be an easy fix for that particular issue. So, I think between now and, and if you wanted it brought up again at the next work session, or we could do, like you mentioned, a separate, just one hour talking about this specific thing, it would be nice to have GIS to come, whoever, you know, if Eric's on the generated the maps or, or somebody representing GIS, to talk about the mapping in particular, but that's the reason those two items are different.
There's places in Four also out on the very far end of Sunnyside where that same scenario applies.
Yeah, on the far right side, there's a little pocket there. So, yeah, similar issue on that one.
And I think in summary, my point was just, it's a little more confusing than just doing a count of the census and that we need to make sure we do it correctly. If we can do it correctly in the next few months, then I'm okay with that.
And if we could review it at the work session, that makes sense because that gives us plenty of time to vote on it if we decide to move forward. If we don't move forward, then it doesn't matter anyway. We're, we're engaging the community and waiting till after the election.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Is that going to be it?
If this is an ordinance, then I would take two readings, right? So, and you need it done by December.
And if we had it adopted the first meeting of December, we'd be good.
We'd be okay. So, if we did first meeting, work session in November, second meeting of November is the first reading, first meeting of December is the second reading, then you're okay from the election.
And, and it says it has to be adopted prior to January 4th.
Yeah, but as Lisa was mentioning, we disseminate information to all the candidates in December. So, technically January, but we need to be able to give accurate information upfront for people thinking upfront.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Any other confusion? All right. General City Council discussion, any comments? David?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we had our first official event at the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater for Oktoberfest and a number of staff members showed up and we all had a really great time. It was a very excellent event and it went very smoothly and we had a lot more people show up than were originally projected. And all of the comments I have received from all the constituents I've talked to were all incredibly positive and people had a really great time. And I just wanted to big, give a big shout out to our staff who made that opening possible and made that opening such a smooth transition, especially Mr. Shide, that hats off, sir. Excellent job.
And a nice, to see the police department out enjoying the music also and taking care of us and looking after everyone.
On past Friday, I attended the Colorado Municipal League Executive Committee meeting and one of the robust discussions we had was about dues from member cities. All but two cities in the state of Colorado are members of the Colorado Municipal League. And in trying to create equity between the cities and the dues, it looks like the City of Montrose's dues would go down a little. So, that's on our, for us, that's exciting. And then for the league as a whole, who relies on those dues from cities, it's good news to try and create a, a system that is fair across our state and allows faster-growing cities to catch up with more established cities who've been putting in money for a long time. We also talked about some policies that the league is going to pursue at the upcoming state legislative session around housing and policing. And we also did an annual performance evaluation for the executive director, who was well reviewed by the board.
I just would like to, to see if we can get an update sometime in the near future just on some of the policies we put forth, like the spin and win and kind of get an idea of where everything stands and how, and I know you guys were investigating other, other concerns around, say, the vape shops and other things that we were going to maybe chat about, so if we could do that in the near future or, well, Blaine's coming up now.
I can actually just briefly answer that. So, we do plan on coming to City Council in November and between legal and the police department and providing counsel with a myriad of different options to inform on what we are proposing should be done or could be done. And then we'll, we'll go from there. But that'll be in November.
Thank you, Blaine.
Any other questions? How about staff comments?
Just want to reiterate that Oktoberfest was amazing and I just got the update today. Approximately 1,300 to 1,400 people participated. And there are a few things we learned from the very first event regarding access and different things, but we're meeting as a team this next week to figure those things out to be ready for the next one. And we have some time because we are, there were some delays due to COVID and everything else related to HVAC and heating systems, so it will be shut down for the winter, which will buy us a few months to get, learn from that first experience and be ready to go for spring. And thanks to Ashley P. Tac, who's no longer with the city, she moved on to another position, a broader position, doing southwest tourism type stuff, but she was a big part of that as well as Jim Shide and others. No, BT.
Jim, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have an update on the PD project, so I asked them to make a little extra noise this morning just to make the point a little bit better. So, we're having our topping out party this Wednesday, which is kind of a traditional construction event that you do right at the end of structural steel. It kind of is a, a transition in construction from exterior to interior. And so, we're at that stage in this project already, which seems really quick, but we're at steel topping out. So, this Wednesday, we'll be having a lunch onsite, kind of celebrating, thank the construction crews for all their hard work. And then, and then the project will kind of change. We go from structural steel to more interior work, which you can kind of see already actually on this west side of the building, it's transitioned to somewhat of the interior framing, where on the east side, they're still setting structural steel. So, just wanted to let you know, we're at that point in the project and we'll be seeing you Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, City Council. I wanted to invite you as well as our community to our Block 93 Block Party. It will be held this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 on Block 93 in the public parking lot there and in that alleyway. So, Bree's been working really hard on getting that event set up and ready to go. We have mobile food vendors out there, we have vendors from the Main Street area, Mosaic, Fabula, formerly Downtown Mercantile, they just changed their name. We'll be having vendors out there. We will have Two Rascals Beer as well. Donnie Morales will be performing, so it will be a great event. So, DART invites you to come out to that event, 4:00 to 7:00 this Thursday at Block 93. Thank you.
And you have good weather scheduled, right?
Good weather, yes.
And this event is open to the public?
That is correct. It is open to the public, it is free to the public, so come on out, again, 4:00 to 7:00.
When you say free, you don't mean the food and the beer. You mean like coming to the event is?
Coming to the event is free.
And those items are available?
The entertainment is free, but the beverages and food will be at a cost. However, we do have some pretzels, some chocolate-covered pretzels that will be free.
I just want to make sure we set up clear expectations.
Free chocolate-covered pretzels, little baggies. Hope to see you there, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thanks. In that case, we'll close the meeting for today. Do I have a motion? Okay, we're closed.